You're watching Cable Two.
Good evening. Welcome to the May 23rd, 2017 Winston-Salem-Phersyth County Board of Education Meeting. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by an invocation led tonight by David Singletary. Will you all please stand?
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray as you will. Lord Jesus, we thank you for safely bringing us together today, and thank you for this opportunity to conduct the good business of this board for the benefit of our community, our students, staff, and schools. Even in these, the most trying of times, we thank you for your mercy and the blessings that you bring to us. And among those blessings and blessings, we ask you would be mindful of the Manchester Community, its victims, their families, and those who seek to protect and care for them. We pray that your mercy and grace would abound with them, your healing touch and your love be felt amongst them, and they be quickly restored. We pray that you would keep us ever humble and loving toward each other, knowing that only in our striving for that perfect love can we find that perfect peace you've promised. Make us all to be good servants and stewards to that which you have given us in hopes that your grace will continue to sustain us and provide for our needs. Lord, bless this board which you have chosen and directed to serve this community and its children. Bless us with your grace, your wisdom, and your understanding. Direct our ways that our decisions and accomplishments would be good and pleasing in your sight, and in that same measure, good and pleasing to all the communities that you have given us to serve. We submit ourselves to you; we lift our prayers, our praises, and our thanksgivings to you. We ask all these things in your mighty name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. You may be seated. Board members, we have a few changes to our agenda this evening. If you will look under action items, if we could remove action item F, and that's the consideration of approval of bids for the Lawrence-Paisley replacement schools, and we need to add item K, which would be the consider of approval of a purchase of a chiller for Atkins High School. I believe those are the only changes to the agenda that we have. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda and approve it?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Singletary and Mr. Barr, and all in favor, thank you very much. This is by far the, our favorite part of the evening, and those are our special recognitions. At this time, we would like to recognize those for Character Education Service Awards.
Chairman Jones, Dr. Emery, and members of the board, it is my distinct honor to recognize our 2016-2017 Character Education Service Award winners. This year's recipients represent the true meaning of service before self, and embody the district's seven pillars of character, which are courage, caring, perseverance, self-discipline, respect, responsibility, and integrity. First, I would like to recognize this year's elementary award winner, Tamir Samuel, who is a fifth grader at Rule Hall Elementary School. Tamir's fifth grade teacher, Ms. Sprague, described Tamir as outgoing, friendly, helpful, responsible, respectful, hardworking, and caring. Ms. Robertson, his fourth grade teacher, said Tamir is kind and thoughtful and treats his classmates and teachers with respect. He has become a true leader at our school. Ms. Cotton, the principal at Rule Hall Elementary, said, "I remember Tamir enrolling with his grandmother and the smile he had on his face that day." There are many students at Rule Hall, and as their principal, I love to see students that are well-rounded, hard-working, and eager to learn. Not only does Tamir possess all those traits, but he is a friend to all, no matter what. He is the student that reaches out to others to make sure everything is okay. Not only is Tamir a great friend and student, but we are proud that he exemplifies the Rule Hall Bulldog. This year's middle school winner is Brooke Lackey, a seventh grader at Paisley-Ivy Magnet School. Brooke's teachers said Brooke wanted to make a difference, so she founded a charity called Eats for Earth, E4E. E4E started in February of 2016. Brooke's charity collects foods and monetary donations, and the healthy food that is collected or purchased from donations is packaged in single-serving bags and handed out directly to those who are in need because they are hungry or homeless. Brooke stated that it goes to show you that we can help people every day with a random act of kindness. She exemplifies the true meaning of kindness in all aspects of her school day, and is also an A Honorable Student who is involved with multiple after-school activities. She is an extraordinary student who shocks you in the best way. Brooke is beyond not only her age, but her time. We live in a world where sadly, the worst is expected of young people. Brooke defies those expectations and shows the people around her that there's still plenty of good in the world. She is an absolute joy to be around. Finally, this year's high school winner is Nadia Wisely, a ninth grader who is also a student at Paisley-Ivy Magnet School. Nadia's teachers said she is an outstanding student and has taken the initiative to start a club in her neighborhood called Express Yourself. She meets weekly with children to introduce them to art and focus their attention on positive activities. Nadia plans and facilitates all of the club's projects, which have included singing, dancing, and drawing. Her goal is to show young kids there is more to life than drugs and violence. She has become an amazing role model to both herself, her club members, and her peers. Tonight, each of these recipients has been presented with a plaque, as well as a certificate from the Board of Education, as well as a $100 check for the pride that we show in the work that they do in our schools each day. $50 of which was contributed by Character Education, and $50 for each student of which was contributed by the Board of Education. So, thank you to the board, and thank you to our students for all that they do every day.
So, could we, could we also recognize the parents, family, friends of these three amazing students? Could you, would you please stand if you're here, so that we can also recognize you? Thank you. Next, I'll call up Kathy Jordan. I think Kathy, you have several categories.
Chairman Jones, members of the board, Dr. Emery, I have some assistance this, this evening. Doug Keiger, the president of Kernersville Cares for Kids, will be helping with these awards. We're first going to begin with our district It's My Call, It's Our Call winners, and the KCK district winners in the Kernersville areas. So, I would like to first begin by inviting the following schools to come up. Atkins High School, Kernersville Middle School, Glenn High, East Forsyth High, and Early College. If you could come up and stand up in the front. And I'll begin by saying, It's My Call is a random student drug testing program that the district has had for many years since 1998, and it is a program in which our students are making an active choice to remain drug-free, and to lead by example to their peers. So, our district overall winner is Atkins High School with an enrollment of 86.2, 20%. And they are being awarded a trophy, as well as a plaque, for being the district overall winner. Congratulations, Atkins. And I think I may have forgotten the school, Winston-Salem Prep. Are you up there? Oh, thank you. Thank you. Our Kernersville area winner, as well as our district middle school winner, is Kernersville Middle School with a percentage of 84.54%. Congratulations, Colonel, because Kernersville Middle. And we've never had this happen before, but in the Kernersville area, we actually had two schools tie this year at 84.51% for being the Kernersville district, the Kernersville winners, and that's Glenn and East Forsyth. Congratulations. Early College is being presented the trophy for the highest enrollment for a non-traditional high school. And Winston-Salem Prep is being given the trophy for the most improved non-traditional high school. I'm going to ask you all to remain, and I'm going to ask several other schools to join you. These are other schools in our districts that had an exemplary enrollment as well. If Waukertown High School, Carver, Mount Taber, Paisley, Reynolds, West Forsyth, Clemmons Middle, and Southeast Middle could come forward, we will recognize you as well. These are high schools and middle schools that achieved exemplary enrollment in It's My Call, It's Our Call. And for high schools, it's particularly important because there is a voluntary component, as well as a required component. Waukertown High School received, is being recognized for a 70% enrollment. And Carver High School, Mount Taber, Paisley, Reynolds, and West Forsyth have a membership of 50 to 69%. And the two middle schools that we are recognizing tonight have enrollments of 50% or above, actually 60% or above. Congratulations to these schools, and you will be given your certificates. They are, they are outside, and make sure that you pick them up before you leave. Thank you very much, and let us congratulate these students. If our KCK special awards could come forward and line up over here, that would be our two student scholarship winners. We work very closely with a nonprofit in Kernersville known as Kernersville Cares for Kids, and it is our privilege to work with them. And they have established some special, special awards that we will be recognizing tonight. I'm going to ask these three fine young, young women, I'm going to call everybody a young woman, to come up here and receive these awards. And Mr. Keiger, we're going to first start with our student leadership awards. And this is the scholarship that has been given by KCK in honor of Mr. Keiger and Dr. Don Martin. And our two award winners are Nikyla Comer from Glenn, if you'll step forward, and Amira Watson from East Forsyth. They received scholarships of $500 to further their education. And, yes, and then we also have a second KCK award. This is a volunteer award for outstanding volunteerism on the behalf of the KCK board, and it is being presented to Patty Jo Savell, Ms. Savell, tonight. Congratulations. And while you're up here, if you have family members or guests in your audience, if they are here tonight, I know that y'all kind of had a lot of things going on tonight, so I don't know if they made it. If there are any family members, please stand up. Thank you very much. Thank you. And if you could turn around and be greeted by the board. Great, that's great. Just stand and rock, stop right there. We should have six of you all. That's great, and it doesn't matter what order. That's fine. Yes, I'm willing, yeah. If you all will just go and stand toward the front, I would appreciate it. Thank you, and face the audience. Thank you. It is my privilege tonight to introduce to you our district's Spirit of Rachel award winners. Many of you know that Rachel Scott was Columbine's first victim, and we have established a recognition in her honor and memory for students who exemplify the kinds of traits that were important to Rachel, and these were qualities of kindness and compassion. Many of you may know that our schools also have established clubs at their school, and are, are, these clubs at the secondary level are known as four clubs, Friends of Rachel, and at the element, at the elementary level, they're known as kindness and compassion clubs, KC clubs. So, we had many deserving nominees from our district this year, but the committee that, that rated these nominees decided on six nominations that were deserving of our top award winners. We have two from each level. What I'm going to ask you to do is if you could hold your applause to the end, families may take pictures anytime, that's fine, but if you could hold your applause to the end, and then at the end, I would like all the families and friends that are here to support them to please stand up, and we'll just give them one great big applause for this, for this, for their accomplishments. So, the first award is, awardee is Mason Ridings. Mason, if you will step forward, I think I see him down there. Okay. Mason was nominated by his third grade teacher, Ms. Mueller, and she wrote about Mason that he always encourages his class by saying, "Way to go," or "Congratulations," and he feels badly if a child is by himself, and he will go and above and beyond to make that child feel included, much like Rachel Scott did. Thank you. The next award is from Whittaker Elementary, Victor Heischmidt. If, thank you, you step forward. He is nominated by his fifth grade teacher, Mrs. Waldorf. Victor is the person who will be there on the day. Any of his classmates seem to be, to doubt that they belong and have value. It is just what Victor does as, and sees as the right thing to do, and it doesn't matter to him if anyone notices. Thank you, Victor. Congratulations. Olivia Rogers is from Northwest Middle School. Would you step forward? You did. Nominated by her eighth grade teacher, Mrs. Moore, who wrote, "She has demonstrated the courage to advocate for embracing diversity, and she is willing to befriend all students, regardless of their race, religious beliefs, or cultural differences." Could I have Jahara Fonseca Rogue step forward? She is from Southeast Middle School. She was nominated by her principal, Ms. Gentry, and her four club advisor, Ms. Watson, who writes of, of her, "Whether a stranger or a fellow new student, Jahara is the first to speak and let the other person know how she cares." She's been interest, she's been instrumental in coming up with all the ideas for the Random Acts of Kindness Week, and she's also shared her wisdom and knowledge at our district-wide Stand Up Step Up Bullying Prevention Walk and Rally by conducting student sessions. Christopher Thomas is from North Forsyth High School. He was nominated by his counselor, Mr. Glenn, who affirms that Christopher seeks daily to leave a wake of positive energy behind him wherever he goes. And he will continue his journey to do this as he completes college and goes on to divinity school. The last nominee, but certainly not the last, last in, in, in the nature of what he has accomplished, is Michael Vallejos, if you could step forward, from West Forsyth High School. He was nominated by his English teacher, Mrs. Snyder, who writes, "He is motivated intrinsically and by a deep sense of bettering the community around him. He has truly served in leadership roles." I would like to congratulate each of these nominees. They exemplify the qualities that Rachel stood for. They speak words of kindness, and they act in ways that express concern and empathy towards people, and they also are willing to take a step out of their bounds and start a chain reaction, and look for the small ways to make a difference in the lives of others. This is, this is your class of your Spirit of Rachel winners this year, and we are proud of them, and you may stand and recognize them, particularly friends and family. Now, if you'll just turn around, and the board will want to greet you. And if y'all can meet me out there, grab them and tell them to meet me out there.
At this time, I would like to recognize Dr. Simmington with some very special scholarship recipients.
Good evening, Chairman Jones, members of the board, Dr. Emery. It's the most wonderful time of the year. For the last few weeks, seniors are in that time of year where they will culminate their high school experiences, and part of those experiences for the group that we recognize tonight includes them being recognized for many, many outstanding accomplishments. And because they are so outstanding, we will not be able to list all of those superlatives individually, so collectively, we just want to say that they are the class of 2017's best of the best. We do, however, want to share a bit about the scholarships that they've received, so that you might know who they are, and as we call the scholarship and the student's name, we would ask that the families, the parents and families, might stand. We also want to recognize the principals, the scholarship chairs, the counseling directors, and the scholarship committees for the work that they do. And we begin with the Cash Abraham Memorial Scholarships, sponsored by the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools and the PTA Council, and I'm looking for Irv. So, I'm going to ask the recipients of the Cash Abraham Memorial Scholarship to come forward. Deja? Deja Tristan, then. So, the Cash Abraham Memorial Scholarships are sponsored by the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, and these scholarships recognize leadership, service, potential, and academic abilities. This year, we're pleased to recognize four students, one of them who could not be here tonight. They are also, were recognized at the PTA Council banquet, and so tonight, they actually get their certificates, their checks, and their book bags from the PTA Council. So, to Deja Dobson, Tristan Furmer, and Nicholas Lugloff, we say congratulations. Deja is a senior at Atkins, Tristan's a senior at Reagan, and Nick is a senior at North Forsyth. If parents are here for these two students, if they would please stand. All right, come on up, Sierra. So, Sierra is our Cash Abraham winner. She's a senior at Parkland High School. Congratulations, Sierra. As we're moving through, I'd also like to acknowledge, in front of your places, board members, Dr. Emery, you have a list of selected colleges. These are not all of the colleges that our seniors are attending, but this is a representative list of colleges and universities, and you can see that it spans the gamut of the most prestigious colleges and universities in the country to local colleges and universities. In addition, you also have a printout of our scholarship totals from the last 10 years, and you can see that it's increased from about 10 years ago of $36 million to, in the class of 2016, more than $100 million. And we expect that in the class of 2017, because we've never gone down, the pressure's off for the class of 2017, that that number will increase. The next group to be recognized are National Merit Scholars. The competition for the National Merit Scholarship began in October 2015, when over 1.5 million juniors took the PSAT to qualify for this scholarship. Last fall, the high school participants in each state representing less than 1% of the nation's high school seniors were named semifinalists. Only these 16,000 semifinalists from the year, from the country, had an opportunity to continue in the competition. From the semifinalist group, 15,000 students met the very high academic standards. Recently, the National Merit Scholarship Corporation announced this year's scholarship recipients, and we are pleased to recognize these students. By the way, Ms. Monica Davis is over here a little confused because I skipped over the good nights, and I'll come back to the good nights, but we're doing the National Merit Scholarships.
I'm ready.
You're good. Very good. And because many of these students are very busy, all of them are not able to be here tonight. We have Courtney Michaels from East Forsyth High School, Benjamin Gardner from Mount Tabor High School, Ashton Winikoff from Mount Tabor High School, Anadema from Reynolds High School, Vivian Mayers from Reynolds High School, Leah Wilson from Reynolds High School, Ren Garrison from West Forsyth High School, and Connor Schmidt from West Forsyth High School. In addition, not on our agenda, but we did not want to leave these two students out, we have Tang Yan Lee from Reagan and Alan Zhao from Reagan, and we'll be sure to get them their certificates. These students are the recipients of $2,500 scholarships from the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. Please join me in recognizing them, and if their parents are here, would they please stand? The Good Night Scholars Program at NC State University has named its class of 2021. This group represents the ninth class of Good Night Scholars. The Good Night Scholars Program was established in 2008 out of the philanthropic generosity of North Carolina natives and NC State alumni, Dr. Jim Goodnight, co-founder of Global Business Analytics Software Leader SaaS Institute, and his wife, Ms. Ann Goodnight, Director of Community Relations. The Good Night Scholars Program is targeted at North Carolina residents from middle-income families who aspire to study in a science, technology, education, mathematics, or STEM-related education discipline at NC State. The scholarship is valued at more than $81,000. The Good Night recipients from our district are Amira Watson from East Forsyth, Jason Harper Day from Mount Tabor, and Devon Wyatt from West Forsyth. If parents and families are here, if they would please stand. Our next honorary is the recipient of the Millennium Scholarship from Penn State University. The Penn State Millennium Scholars Program is designed for high-achieving science, technology, engineering, and math, or STEM, students who will become leaders in their chosen fields and are committed to increasing the diversity of professionals in STEM-related disciplines. This scholarship is valued at more than $200,000. And the recipient from the Early College of Forsyth is Isabella Rico. If Isabella's family is here, if they would please stand. The next several scholarship recipients are not here, but I will read their descriptions very briefly. The Chancellor's Merit Scholarship at UNC Wilmington was created by the Board of Directors of the UNCW Foundation in recognition of the university's identified priority for additional merit scholarships to recruit and retain highly, high-quality students. These scholarships are merit-based and the recipients are selected on demonstrated academic ability. The Chancellor's Merit Scholarship for UNC Wilmington is an East Forsyth student, Blythe Mudgeet, who's unable to be with us tonight. The Founder's Scholarship from Harding University is awarded to students who fall within a particular bracket for academic scholarships at Harding University. These students must score 33 or above on the ACT and 1490 or above on the SAT. The Founder's Scholarship recipient is Eric Trauber from East Forsyth. We have a student who's received a Teacher Education and Chancellor Scholarship to UNCG. She's also unable to be here, but we certainly want to recognize her for being awarded the Teacher Education Fellows Program, which was reinstituted at UNCG in 2015. The program is a campus-based scholarship designed to help increase the number of teacher leaders at UNCG. The value of the Teacher Education Fellow is $20,000, and the value of the Chancellor's Scholarship, which is awarded to a select number of entering students, is varied. Our next scholarship recipient is Sage Martina. Sage is the recipient of the WN Reynolds Memorial Scholarship, awarded to students who are children of employees of Reynolds American and its affiliates or subsidiaries and students in Forsyth County and who will attend Duke University. Congratulations to Sage. If Sage's parents are here, would they please stand? The Wofford Merit Scholarship is the largest merit-based scholarship program at Wofford College. To qualify as a Wofford Scholar, a student must be ranked in the top 10% of the class and have achieved a combined score of 1,300 on the PSAT or SAT, or a 28 on the ACT or PLAN. The value of this scholarship ranges from $40,000 to $250,000. The Wofford Scholar from East Forsyth is Christian Cassai, and Christian's unable to join us. We have two students who've received Army ROTC scholarships, and again, neither of these students are able to be here, but we want to recognize both Holden Armstrong from Mount Tabor High School and Andrew Vernon from West Forsyth. The Army Reserve Officers Training Corps was born when President Woodrow Wilson signed the National Defense Act of 1916. Since its inception, ROTC has provided leadership and military training at schools and universities across the nation. Army ROTC provides cadets with the character-building aspects of a diverse self-discipline civilian education with tough centralized leadership development training. Congratulations to Andrew and Holden. Rachel Bezinksky, Bezinski, Rachel. Rachel is the recipient of an appointment to the United States Air Force Academy, where education is at a different altitude. The mission of the United States Air Force Academy is to educate, train, and inspire men and women to become officers of character motivated to lead the United States Air Force in service to our nation. With a history of excellence and a focus on the future, the U.S. Air Force Academy steals cadets with pride and integrity while preparing them to serve their country and succeed in a 21st century career. As a public university and a military service academy, the Air Force Academy is leading the way into an increasingly complex future, driving advancement and innovation in aerospace and cyberspace, among other fields. The appointment to the U.S. Air Force Academy is valued at $416,000. Congratulations to Rachel. If her parents are here, would they please stand? The Dreamer Scholarship is created for students who are in situations where they have limited or no access to college, either because they face paying out-of-state tuition or have limited opportunities to attend college. We're pleased to recognize Maria Aguilera from North Forsyth High School, who is a recipient of a Dreamer's Opportunity Scholarship, valued at $80,000. The Wake Forest University Academic Scholarship is awarded to Yair Morales. And the Wake Forest, the Wake Forest University Academic Scholarship is a full-tuition merit scholarship that covers the entire cost at Wake Forest University, which is in the range of $280,000. The Park Scholarships are named for the late Roy H. Park, class of 31, an NC State alumnus who created the charitable Park Foundation, dedicated to education, media, and the environment. In 1996, the Park Scholarships were established at NC State with a generous grant from the Park Foundation. The mission of the Park Scholarships Program is to bring exceptional students to NC State based on outstanding accomplishments and potential in scholarship, leadership, service, and character. The program develops and supports Park Scholars in these areas, preparing them for lifelong contributions to the campus, state, nation, and world. This scholarship is valued at more than $100,000. Join me in congratulating Georgia Burgess as a Park Scholar. For Yair and Georgia, if their parents or families are here, would they please stand? The Chancellor's Scholarship from Appalachian State University is the oddest competitive merit-based full scholarship at Appalachian. It is designed for students with ambitious academic goals involving graduate or professional post-baccalaureate degrees such as a PhD, MD, or JD. Scholarship recipients are also admitted to the university honors college. Chancellor's Scholars are provided with study abroad opportunities beginning in their freshman year and classroom and experiential research opportunities. Support for research and scholarship for the summer and academic year through the Office of Student Research for research and scholarship in the student's target area of study, including travel funds to attend conferences. Scholarship is valued in excess of $114,000. So we congratulate Madeline Gillett. If Madeline's parents are in the audience, would they please stand? Being accepted for admission into the United States Military Academy at West Point is an exceptional honor, reserved for our nation's most promising students. But it takes more than excellent grades to be accepted for admission. West Point wants leaders who are not only intelligent, but who are physically fit and of outstanding character. Those who are selected to attend, West Point receives a college education that is unparalleled in the world with tuition, room and board, and expenses fully paid. In addition to the application process, students must receive a nomination from the United States Senator or a member of the United States House of Representatives. The appointment to West Point is valued at more than $400,000. So we would like to congratulate Thomas Aldizer from Reagan High School, if his family is here, if they would please stand. The Stamp Scholarship is awarded to approximately five entering first-year students who demonstrate outstanding academic achievement, a high level of intellectual curiosity and scholarship, exceptional promise in leadership, service, and social responsibility, perseverance, character, integrity, and innovation. The award totals approximately $280,000 over four years. We are pleased to recognize Sarah Timbleton, a senior at RJ Reynolds High School. UNC Kenan Flagler Business School selects a small group of first-year students for a sure admission to the undergraduate business major. These high-achieving students are identified through a comprehensive evaluation of their undergraduate application. The scholarship totals $51,000 of assistance. We are pleased to recognize Anna Glance from West Forsyth High School. The Baden Honors College will award 24 years of fellowships to selected members of each class. These fellows will receive academic leadership scholarships totaling the full amount of tuition each year. The value of this fellowship is more than $144,000 over four years. The recipient this year from West Forsyth is Jenna Whitner, and I don't think Jenna is here, but we congratulate her. The BN Duke Scholarship at Duke University is for scholars who excel academically, engage their communities, and aspire to become leaders at Duke and beyond. The Benjamin and Duke Program brings outstanding students from the Carolinas to Duke University in order to foster appreciation, mutual respect, and connection between the scholars and the people of North and South Carolina. The scholarship is valued at $290,000. The two BN Duke, the two BN Duke Scholars from our district are Austin Smith and Sarah If parents and family members are here, would they please stand? The Nancy Susan Reynolds Scholars must not only be excellent students and promising scholars, but creative leaders who are able to influence others in directions likely to benefit society. They will have achieved unusual distinction in the classroom and beyond. Successful applicants have pursued the most challenging curriculum available to them and have achieved grade point averages and standardized test scores that place them in the top percentage in comparison to their peers. The Reynolds Scholarship covers the annual cost of tuition, room, and board, plus $1,500 for personal expenses at Wake Forest University, which is likely in the neighborhood of $300,000. So congratulations to Bennett Gould. To members of the board, Chairman Jones, Dr. Emery, in this most wonderful time of the year, I present to you the best and brightest of the class of 2017. is here. We'd ask that she would stand.
At this time, we will continue to recognize some of our best and brightest with some wonderful scholarships from our Forsyth Assistant Principal Association.
Good evening. I am Lakeisha Hill, the Assistant Principal at Main Street Academy, and I'm also the president of the Forsyth Assistant Principals Association. Chairman Jones, the board, and Dr. Emery, on behalf of the 2016, 2017 Forsyth Assistant Principals Association Board, we would like to take, um, the time, I mean, excuse me, board, we would like to thank our recipients for taking the time to submit such a compelling essay for the FAPPA Scholarship, valued at $200. That alone showed us that they are really conscientious students and that they are planning to have a successful future. We are honored to assist financially, we believe in them, and we wish them well in their future endeavors. I'll be reading out the recipients' names and the schools that they will be retaining in the fall. Kelly Allen from Atkins High School, and she will be attending UNC Charlotte. Caitlin Brooks from East Forsyth High School, and she will be attending UNC Wilmington. Jasmine Dove from Glenn High School, and she will be attending Jasmine Dove from Glenn High School, and she will be attending UNC Charlotte. These students are not here, but we would still like to recognize them. Krista Gomez from John F. Kennedy High School, and she will also be attending UNC Charlotte. Justin Cartwright from Mount Tabor High School, he will be attending North Carolina State. Juan Castro from North Forsyth High School, he will be attending Forsyth Tech. Jose Susada from Parkland Magnet High School, he will be attending Winston-Salem State University. Jalen Jeffries from Reynolds High School, she will be attending North Carolina A&amp;T State University. Tyrese Hudson, he attends Reagan High School, and he will be attending North Carolina State University. Armani McMillan from Walkertown High School, she will be attending UNC Charlotte, she's not here with us today. Maura Freiberg from West Forsyth High School, she will be attending UNC Greensboro. And Jalen Glenn from Winston-Salem Prep Academy, he will be attending East Carolina University. If the parents of these students are here, we would like for you to stand and be recognized as well.
It's always a surprise and a fun time, and so I know we had a very excited principal this year, and I will let you do those, all those wonderful honors.
Thank you so much. Well, good evening, school board members, Dr. Emery, parents. It is my honor and privilege to be able to recognize tonight the 2016-2017 Winston-Salem-Forsyth County Teacher of the Year, Ms. Jenny Hawke. So I've known Ms. Hawke since she started student teaching at Prince Abraham Elementary School 12 years ago. She spent her first seven years as an EC self-contained teacher, the last four as a first-grade teacher. Every time I walk into her classroom, it just astonishes me how she can capture the minds and the souls of our students. It's just incredible. Ms. Hawke exemplifies everything it is about teaching, and she motivates herself and others to strive for that. Teaching is not a job nor a career for Ms. Hawke, it is her mission and passion. So once again, please give Ms. Hawke a huge round of applause for her job well done.
So sadly, that concludes our special recognitions for the evening. We kind of noticed that, right? The room starts to empty out. Next, we have comments on agenda items. I believe we have one, one person to speak up. At this time, I would recognize Dr. Amber Baker.
Chair Jones, Member of the Board, Dr. Emery. I just wanted to take a few minutes to first thank all the hard work of the Curriculum Committee and the members from the district who put together the 2016 through 2019 AIG Plan. And I would just like to ask that as we move forward, that some serious consideration be given to how we will service schools like mine who may not have a population large enough for a full-time teacher but do have children that have been identified and cannot receive the services simply because we're in a predicament of not being able to find a hard, a teacher because of the appointment. So really challenging you to give some thought to, how will we service those schools? Because those children need to be serviced as well, and we continue to work to develop our children who may not necessarily qualify but show academic promise. And so that, that is what I would say this afternoon or this evening, and just wanted to make that known, that, that is the charge I put before you this afternoon.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. So that concludes public comments on agenda items, and we move right into our discussion items for the evening. And first up, we will talk about the 2016-2019 AIG Plan.
Good evening, school board members, parents, community members, teachers, administrators. I'm Susan Price Cole, I'm the AIG Program Manager, and our district's AIG Advisory Council, which is composed of teachers, administrators, parents, and community members, have worked very hard to look for continuous improvement in our program. From discussions with the AIG Advisory Council and with administrators and teachers across the district, there are three major revisions that we would like to make to that 2016-2019 AIG Plan. The first proposed change is with our screening, screening and re-screening processes. Currently, students re-screen, students screen on the cognitive abilities test in September, and if they make at least 75th percentile on the aptitude on the cognitive abilities test, then they can take the Iowa Assessment in November. They have to achieve at least 85th percentile on the Iowa Assessment in November if they want to re-screen and if they have not already qualified. Currently, parents can take their students to private evaluators, to local psychologists, and as long as they have at least a 75th percentile on an aptitude or an achievement test, they can re-screen. After talking with, with parents and teachers, administrators, and other community members, we see that there needs to be revisions to this. The revisions that we would like for you to consider are if at least eighty, if students make at least 80th percentile on an aptitude, that cognitive abilities test or subtest in September, then if they have, they can go ahead and take the Iowa Assessment. Then if they have at least 90th percentile on an achievement composite or subtest such as the Iowa Assessment, then re-screening is offered at the school or at a Saturday session at a local school. We would like the Board to consider private evaluations to only incur if the student has had at least 80th percentile on an aptitude, the cognitive abilities test, and at least 90th percentile on an achievement group test such as the Iowa Assessment. That was the first proposed change. The second proposed change is we'd like for the Board to consider the development of a differentiated education plan for all identified third through eighth graders in the district. Currently, we have an AIG Progress Report, which provides parents' information about how their students are progressing with different goals throughout the year, but the teachers have not found it to be very handy, and it has not enhanced communication with the community and with parents. So we would like for the Differentiated Education Plan to be offered for all AIG and HAG students in the district, and with that, there would be an annual parent meeting within the first six weeks of school. It includes opportunities for more parent and student engagement through annual DEP meeting and goal setting, so the goal-setting component will remain. And the DEP would include eligibility information for the parents, grouping options so the parents will know what services they are receiving, content modifications, which are the specific modifications to instruction and curriculum, enrichment options which may include after-school activities and may include some service learning. There will be a mid-year progress report if this is approved so that parents will know the student's progress. That's the second change that we're looking at. The third change is the development of K-2 programming. We know that, as, as has been previously mentioned at all of our schools, we think that K-2 programming can be enhanced to nurture the students, so we think that this can be effectively done through professional development. We'd like to start at the beginning of next school year and have the expectation that all K-2 teachers will attend some type of professional development throughout the remaining of the planned cycle. This may be through online Haku modules, or it may be through face-to-face sessions depending on the needs of the school. It may be 10 hours or it may be more depending on the, the needs of the school, what the staff and the administrators want. The components of the training would include characteristics of giftedness, it would include specific curriculum modules that the teachers would learn how to, and how to meet the social, emotional, academic, and intellectual needs of the gifted students in our district. As part of this also, the teachers would be required to send in some artifacts to show and demonstrate their learning. We have brought these changes to the commit, to the Curriculum Committee twice, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about these changes.
I was just going to ask you, Susan, to maybe give a little, couple sentences background on how this came to be. Why are we doing these changes? What requires us to do that?
Okay. The, the State Department, the State, the Department of Public Instruction looks at state plans when they are submitted every three years. And our plan was, our current plan was submitted last July, beginning of July, and State Department reviewed it. And they looked at Article 9B, which is specifically the state legislation that provides the, the direction of where the AIG programs in our state need to go. So in their feedback to us, they recommended that we have some sort of K-2 programming and, and so that we really support and nurture these students. And what we're looking at is not just looking at nurturing a handful, we want to nurture all of our students here in our district so that they can all reach their full potential. The Differentiated Education Plan is actually state-mandated through Article 9B, and we, we want to make sure that it is a living document that is effective, and that is what teachers want. And I actually had a couple of focus groups with teachers, and we worked through the process of this, and they really like it much better than the current progress report. They feel like it's going to be more effective, it's going to really help make change with their gifted students in their classrooms, and they think that it will foster two-way communication with parents as well.
Do you want to address Dr. Baker's question about, you know, schools and her situation, perhaps?
So we, we definitely understand that we have schools where there may be only five gifted students in the school that are identified. We do know that we have students in the district who have high potential that are not identified. So we really believe that we need to, to help, we need to make sure that those students' needs are addressed socially, emotionally, intellectually, and academically. So our plan, we've got, we're looking at a few options. One option is having a computer-based program possibly, and the other option is having a teacher, hiring a part-time teacher to come in and work with those schools several days a week. I have plans for next year, actually starting this summer, to start working with schools, and I've already made, made some, some calendar plans already for some schools, to go out to the schools and work with the teachers, work with the teachers for instruction. I believe that this can be effectively done through co-teaching. So I, I plan to go out and, and I hope that I will be asked to come and provide this professional development at the schools. I've actually worked with Duke University for the past two years as they have taken teachers through the AIG licensure program, so I know about all of the effective models that can be utilized, and those models are really good for all students. It's high-level instruction for all students, which we need in all of our schools. So I think this will be a positive thing. I, I believe that we, it will require a lot of training at the beginning, but I'm ready for it, and I hope the Board will consider approving it. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. She's new to the district, and I was just going to say you've done a great job so far being here a short period of time. It's a lot of work, and the AIG Committee, okay, I'll, just, it has been ongoing for years and years, and so every, so often lots of tweaking and revisions go on per the mandate from the state. So that's why we look at this every three years at least, and really it's kind of an ongoing process.
I do have a few questions before you leave. Number one, I'm certainly a supporter of any developmental programming that we can provide for our teachers to help them in assessing. I'm also, but I'm also a supporter of all students when it comes down to educational opportunities, and I've got a few questions for you. Do you expect us to be serving fewer students moving forward under this new standard?
I, I think that the screen, the, when we look at our screening procedures and when we look at our criteria, I think that we may be serving fewer students, but I don't think it will make that big of a difference because we have multiple pathways, and students can enter our program at any time through grades three through eight. I do, what I would like to see is, I would like to see the students in all of our schools being served as far as provided with high-quality, higher-order thinking, you know, instruction that is, that is really equitable, and so that's, that's what I hope to see, and I hope to work towards.
Okay. Do, I know that we all, that we have a teacher shortage going into each school year, but do you, do we also have fewer AG, HAG-certified teachers at this point?
We have quite a few AIG and HAG teachers who are certified, but not all of them are teaching in an AIG teacher role at our schools.
Okay, so it's not a lack of a quali, it's not a lack of qualified teachers?
Well, we, we do, we are lacking, in some of our schools, there are no AIG certified teachers in some of our schools.
But it's not because we couldn't assign a teacher there?
That is true.
Okay. It's kind of interesting to me, and I understand that the state legislature is always asking us to consider things, but in considering the development of K-2 programming for AG and HAG students, it appears to me that we have a couple of things going on. Number one, we're increasing the, we're making the requirement more stringent, which has the potential to limit the access of a number of students, while at the same time, we're making, making an additional task of teaching K through two students how to identify AG, HAG students when we have third graders that aren't reaching their reading potential. I mean, it would seem to me that we should be focusing that attention at that time on those K through two students. In addition, is it also true that there is a requirement in the new HAG, H-AIG Plan, and it may have always been there, that when it comes to parent participation, that a student could actually be removed from the program for lack of parental participation?
No.
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 Okay, okay, I just misread that, I'm sorry. Because I saw a part here that said, "Guidelines for mandatory parent conference, a conference is required," and so I wanted to find out if a parent wasn't able to attend, did that mean that a student could be taken out of the program because of the parent? Okay, just wanted to make sure that's the case.
We, I'm sorry, but I just want to mention, bring in here, that we, we, once a student is identified as gifted, they are gifted. Not all of our gifted students reach their potential, and it's our job as educators to find ways to meet their needs and get, and reach their motivation so that they will be successful. My hope is that through my work with the teachers, that, and work with parents, that we will have fewer situations where students are not being successful, so we can really work on looking at that. work on looking at that exiting procedure, which was here before I came.
Okay. Oh, and you've done a great job, so I apologize for you being on the point of these questions. I've had concerns about this throughout the process, but I wasn't exactly sure what was nagging me, until I ran across a recent article that really laid out exactly what concerns me about the change in this plan. We already deal with an achievement gap across the state. And of course, with our school, we're working hard to make sure that we can do everything we can to minimize that achievement gap. However, in a recent seven-year study in North Carolina, it was documented that in the AG, HAG programs, that there is a huge gap. In Forsyth County, that gap is seventy percent between the number of our students who, with comparable scores, come from low-income families compared to students with comparable scores who come from higher-income families getting into our AG, HAG program, and that concerns me. I knew that there was something that was concerning me as we moved on this, but I couldn't quite put my finger on it, and this is what does. So I will always be supportive of our efforts to bridge these gaps, but I, in good conscience, will not be able to support this this evening because it does not equitably serve all of our students.
I sure wish you'd come to some of those meetings, David.
Well, ma'am, if you recall, I was at a few of those meetings.
Well, I don't recall that.
Okay, then I apologize for your short-term memory.
You brought these concerns, I'm not aware of that big gap that he's talking about, so you need to show me that study.
Well, that's not a problem, this is new, ma'am.
So I think, I believe that there are a couple of things that News and Observer have had a couple of articles about some of these things that have come up. There was some conversation about that today on NPR and highlighting some deficiencies maybe in another school district. So I don't know where all of the fuss is, you know, coming from. But anyway, thank you, David, for sharing your concerns. And, you're right. Okay, Mr. Johnson, I'm gonna call Marilyn, and then, thank you.
I just want to make sure that I'm clear on this. We, as well, have the ability, and I think it's J., and I'm not sure which section, but anyway, that if we have students who come close to qualifying, but they're not, and if there's room in the, with the AIG instructor, that those children would be pulled as well. Am I reading this correctly? We used to call them live-ins, I don't know whether they call them anymore, but...
Yeah, thank you for the question. We are trying to change that term to talent pool.
Okay.
It sounds a little bit, but yes. We have a lot of schools, and I have seen it in Rockingham County, I've seen students who are in the talent pool placed with gifted classrooms, and they soar. So they can very reach their potential, so yes, we...
So some students who maybe would qualify on the reading score but not on the math score would still be able to be pulled out maybe for the reading section of that and vice versa if they were talented in math?
That is exactly true.
And that's what, and that is, I'm reading this correctly, is part of this policy, correct?
That is correct. And I just want to address the achievement gap question. I am aware of the achievement gap here in Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools, and I am here for all students. So I feel like what we need to do in order to lessen and tighten that up is we need professional development for teachers, and we need someone to go in and work with the teachers on those higher-level skills. That's what I would like to do. I mean, I'm offering my services to all of the principals, for all of the staff, not just for our gifted students. But I think we, I think that we really need to bring in all of those cost level of questioning. For example, we need to bring in more problem-based learning opportunities, we need to have Socratic seminars. The teachers need to know how to question the kids and how to get the kids to start questioning. Because I think that's, the biggest thing we have in schools right now is, students don't know how to think, and that's our job as educators to teach them how to think. And so this AIG plan, even though it may say AIG, it's really for all students reaching their full potential.
Mr. Johnson?
Sir, is this a requirement by the state? Is this a requirement that we are trying to push forward?
Yes, sir, it is. It is part of, it is part of Article 9B, which is state law.
Additional questions for Susan or comments?
I did want to mention that, to some of the comments and questions here, we have, for two, at least two years, changed our teacher allotment. So some of you may recall that in past, if you were in a small school like Kimberly Park and you were identified as gifted, you couldn't get services there at all, you had to make a choice to go to a different school. And we have had allotments for the last two years, but the difficulty, as Mr. Singletary pointed out, is getting teachers to fill them. We have certified licensed teachers in the district, so since we've had this topic and we're on TV, I sort of shamelessly want to say, if you're out there and you're licensed and you're not teaching, we need you. We have the allotments for these schools, but people don't necessarily want to teach because it's a part-time position, or it's an itinerant or traveling position. And so we have made the commitment with our resources to staff those schools and to provide those services, but those schools, I think, as we heard Dr. Baker say, have a very difficult time finding someone willing to go in and take those positions. So here's a plea. If you really want to step up, we could certainly use those folks out there who are licensed to help us in some of these hard-to-serve schools.
Thank you, Dr. Emery. Thank you, Susan, for your work on the plan, and also, I see faces of some parents. I'm not sure if I see all the teachers that are out here, but the AIG committee that meets once a month.
About once a month.
About once a month. Dedicated group of parents, students, community members who have worked very hard on the plan and really doing their due diligence to ask all those questions and back and forth. So thank you for all of those who serve and do that very willingly to help out, and much appreciate that.
May I ask the board one more question?
One concern of some of the parents in our community is that our department is composed of me, solely me, being the only certified staff. And I know that we need teachers at those six schools, and I would like for the board to possibly consider, what if we had a part-time, and we could get this person quickly, a part-time person to serve those six schools and also help me with my professional development piece? If we could get that, then we could get someone very, very quickly, and it would also help us with professional development. So if there's any way that we can find funding, I've been told that this wouldn't happen, but I wanted to bring it up, since there seems to be such a need for it, I just thought I would ask you all to please consider.
Thank you.
So next, I will recognize Dr. Emery to discuss the Institute for Student Achievement Contract for Winston-Salem Prep.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Superintendent would like to have, be able to lay golden eggs and take care of all the requests that we need. They're actually all needed. I wish we could fulfill them all. Tonight, we bring back a contract that you approved recently for Carver High School. You will recall that the U.S. Department of Education has approved certain research-based contractors. Carver was a recipient of a SIG grant, and the Institute for Student Achievement will be doing work there. While Winston-Salem Prep was not a SIG grant recipient, they do have school improvement grant funds, and feel like this because it is a research-based opportunity, and those folks will be coming to town for Carver, a good opportunity for Winston-Salem State. This is a very small grant request, but it does exceed the $10,000 threshold. What we're asking you to approve tonight are pieces that will take place before a new fiscal year, so it would be orientation with the staff, and then a two-day institute for teachers. And we will recommend that in the action portion of the agenda. Any questions?
Questions for Dr. Emery? Thank you, Dr. Emery. Next, we'll recognize Lauren Richards as we discuss our food service management contract for 2017.
Thank you, Chairman Jones, board members, Dr. Emery. Takes me a little bit longer to get up here than normal, so I'm limping around. I wanted to speak to you this evening about one of the action items on your agenda for the food service management contract. That contract is with Chartwell's, K-12 Dining, and it does support the district's child nutrition program. As I'm sure many of you are aware, we have been in partnership with Chartwell's for the past fifteen years. It has been a great partnership. They have provided innovative dining solutions, menu options, nutrition education in our classrooms with teachers. And most recently, we had a mobile teaching kitchen called Ellie, Visit a Health Fair at North Forsyth. So they continue to bring valuable, innovative dining things to our district. We had two proposals this year for the contract, Chartwell's and Aramark. Chartwell's came in as the winner of that bid, maintaining a fixed cost at 1.4866 cents per meal. And one of the other key financial pieces that separated Chartwell's and Aramark in this proposal process was the financial support at $3.5 million towards our district and our program. And that isn't just funds that comes with the child nutrition program, that is funds to support the implementation of the core values that the district and members of our community have worked so hard to develop. It comes in the form of interest-free financing, grant funds to help us support the fight against childhood hunger, purchasing equipment to bring our dining facilities up to date and provide new innovative equipment and concepts. As we know, many of our students are dining out these days, and we want to bring them those innovative concepts in their schools. If you've been out to West Forsyth in the last school year, you will see some of the work that we've been able to do out there and some of the new concepts we've been able to bring through that partnership. And so I think that it will be continued success for the next five years, should we choose to, should you choose to approve that contract this evening. Do you all have any questions for me, based on the information in your board books this evening?
Questions for Lauren? Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Next, our curriculum committee report. Ms. Clark?
Yes, all right. So last curriculum committee meeting, third Tuesday of every month, most often. Most months. We had, we heard from Susan, who just spoke to us on the AIG revision and plan, so I won't talk on that anymore because she gave a great detail. And then we also heard from Carol Montague-Davis. She talked about the school improvement planning process and the NC STAR program. That is a management tool, and it's web-based, and it's designed to guide districts or school teams in the continuous improvement process, and it's required for low-performing schools in North Carolina. It builds in accountability and helps schools track their improvement plans. We heard during that presentation from Lisa Bodenheimer, who's a principal at Wiley, and she demonstrated to us and gave us kind of a visual. We pulled it up on the screen, and we were able to see how principals and schools will use it in their school improvement processes. And then we last, we had AIG plan, the NC STAR program, and then we heard from Dr. Cato, also one of our instructional superintendents, about House Bill 1030, which is going to be a partnership between Middle Fork Elementary School and Appalachian State. We're gonna have a lab school here, and it's gonna be Middle Fork. And so this is a state mandate. And so the mission of the lab school will be to provide enhanced educational programming for students in several districts, and we're just one. But we're lucky, we feel, because we had a prior existing partnership with Appalachian State. And so it will be a five-year process, is that right, Dr. Emery? A five-year process, and so it'll be a collaboration. And as you all may know, Appalachian is well-known for its education program, so we're thrilled to have them as partners, and that will be, this year, we will be taking the whole year to kind of design and look at how it's going to, to look when it's fully implemented. So we heard from Dr. Cato on that. Again, curriculum is the third Tuesday of every month, one and all are welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Next, the building and grounds committee report. Ms. Calvert-Haze?
Thank you. We've heard about our child nutrition update, Lauren, and I thank you, and you girls do a wonderful, wonderful job. It is amazing, the things that you tell us in the new creations that you're doing for our kids now. Thank you. Another thing we talked about, there is going to be an increase in school lunches, and let me tell you how frugal we are. We are only going up in price 10 cents for all three, the elementary schools, the middle schools, and high schools. So for elementary schools, it was $2.70, and now we're at $2.80. That's a deal, folks. Also, we talked about Lawrence and Paisley. We've been working really, really hard on that, I gotta say. Colin and Bill and Daryl have done a phenomenal job on that, and we're moving ahead on that. So we'll have some good news coming up soon on where we are on our contract and what we're gonna be doing. And it's gonna be interesting, and I think that you are all gonna be so proud of the school that we have in mind to build on that. We talked about Paisley Tennis Courts, that's a trade-off for the city, and we are gonna be able to acquire the tennis courts at Paisley. We are also gonna be acquiring some property on Dexter Road. We have got an option to purchase, which will help us with what we're trying to do in our school system over there. We talked about the R.J. Reynolds sewer easement. Now, I'm not so good on this, but what this is, it's an easement with the city of Winston-Salem, and I can't go into detail on that. Also, we had an emergency situation to come up, and that's with Atkins Elementary, and that's with a chiller. And so we did vote on that, we took action on that, and we will be getting a new chiller for Atkins Elementary so that our kids, teachers, and staffs will be comfortable. That's all the news that I've got right now. Stay tuned for buildings and grounds, because we are moving ahead.
Thank you, Lyda. David Singletary, the policy committee report?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The policy committee met today, and we tabled a proposed energy policy that has been brought to us by some of our Career Center students and Austin Smith. We should be able to hear that at our next policy meeting coming up in June. We also managed to have an open discussion based on the new class-size legislation and how that is going to impact us and our students. We will continue to be discussing that as we move forward, and we may have some policy issues that we need to address. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Singletary. That concludes our discussion items for the evening, and we move right into action items. First on the agenda would be to consider the 2016-2019 AIG plan. Do I have a motion to approve? They have approval. Motion by Ms. Parker, do I have a second? Second, Ms. Clark. Any discussion board at this time on the plan? No? All those in favor of approving the AIG plan? All those opposed? Okay, so it's seven, well, we've got, right, I know, I had to get my numbers right. So we only have seven tonight, so it's a 5-2, but the plan passes. The next item would be to consider approval for the Institute of Student Achievement Contract that Dr. Emery spoke of this evening for Winston-Salem Prep. Do I have a motion to approve?
So do.
So, Mr. Singletary, I have a second by Mr. Barr. Any discussion board? All those in favor? Motion carries. Consider approval of the food contract, service management contract award for 2017. Do I have a motion to approve?
So do.
Thank you, Ms. Calvert-Haze, do I have a second? Mr. Johnson, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Consider approval of the referendum... Consider approval of the, um, referendum, I mean amendment to the food service amendment uh, for the 2017 summer meals program. Do I have a motion to approve?
Need approval.
Ms. Parker, do I have a second? Ms. Calvert-Hayes, any discussion board? All those in favor? Motion carries. Uh, next we will consider the approval of the adjustment to the paid lunch prices. Do I have a motion to approve? Mr. Singletary, I have a second. Mr. Johnson, any discussion board? All those in favor? Motion carries. Consider appro- uh, we, we removed item F from the agenda, so we will go to, uh, letter G. And that's consider approval of the exercise of option for the Dexter Drive property. Do I have a motion to approve? Ms. Calvert-Hayes, I have a second by Mr. Singletary. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Consider approval of the purchase of the Paisley Tennis Courts. Do I have a motion to approve? Mr. Johnson, do I have a second? Ms. Parker, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Consider of approval of the grant of easement to the city of Winston-Salem for construction of a sewer line. So I have a motion. I have a second by Mr. Singletary. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Consider approval of the 2016-17 budget amendment number six and transfer number six. I have a motion by Chairman, uh, Vice Chairman Barr. Do I have a second, Mr. Singletary? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. We added item, uh, K to the agenda, and that's to consider the approval of the purchase of a chiller for Atkins High School. Do I have a motion to approve? So I have a motion by Ms. Calvert-Hayes, second by Mr. Singletary. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. That concludes our action items for this evening. We have, uh, three items on our consent agenda. Approval of a resolution regarding school finance officer. Okay. Approval of, um, uh, meeting minutes for the May ninth, 2017 meeting and approval of the general personnel report. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Mr. Singletary, a second by Mr. Johnson, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to, um, our public, uh, comments for the evening. Um, we have three, three speakers signed up.